Okay, let's say we get started. Warmest Township Board of Supervisors meeting Thursday, May 6, 2021. May we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to offer a moment of silence for all our brave servicemen and civil servants working here and abroad, and also for all our loved ones lost to the pandemic. Okay, thank you very much. All right, so let's move right along to announcements. If I may go first. We were talking about this on and off for the last, I guess, three weeks, and I'm happy to say, you know, there were some, I read the reports from the March package and also the this package, and I'm unhappy to say that the Memorial Day parade was canceled. There were some issues that were tough to resolve, but I'm actually happy to say that we will be holding a ceremony here at the Township Building on Memorial Day. Stay tuned for that. I'm not quite sure what time yet, but I think around 10 o'clock. Is that what it normally is? Yeah, 10 o'clock. So we want to hold a service. It's been a couple of years, and so we'll have a list for all those great people that have given their lives for this great country, and that's all I have. I'll go to Kathy.
No announcement tonight, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Mark?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. This was just sent to me a moment ago, so bear with me while I read it. It's from the people from Warmesture Gratitude, and they wanted me to announce that the National Police Week is coming up in honor of the brave men and women who wear the badge and serve their community proudly. Warmesture Gratitude are once again selling signs to show appreciation and support. The signs will be available for sale Thursday, May 13, from 6 to 8 p.m. outside of Crafty's Tap Room in York Road of Warmesture. And it can also be ordered through Warmesture Gratitude in Venmo. I have that, and I want to thank everyone that participated in the Warmesture Rotary Golf outing. It was a huge success money-wise. We really made up on the fundraising stuff that we missed out on during the pandemic. We really put a big tendon. So thanks to everyone that participated. I want to apologize to my fellow golfers for sandbagging them, and I'll make it up to you guys next time. That's all I have, but I heard you guys did quite well, though. Scott got a little frustrated with some of the golfers on the course, so we'll have to get out there, Scott, when there's nobody out there. That's all I want to thank. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. We had a lot of fun, and it was for a great cause, and, you know, it was so windy. We knew that we were not going to be in the running, so we had a lot of fun. Scott was a little frustrated at that, but, you know.
It wasn't you guys. It was the, every once in a while, we'd have to wait 15 minutes at a hole all of a sudden.
My buddy said your boy threw the towel in on 17, he ended up. But thanks for anyone, everyone that participated and sponsored everything and helped us make up for what we lost during the pandemic, which is really important, because as you know, the Rotary, we sponsor everything all over town, so thanks again.
Our pleasure. Thank everyone, too. Okay. Mary, you usually have quite a few announcements.
I do. I have Parks and Rec announcements. So Warmesture Community Park improvements have been underway. The grand construction at Warmesture Community Park continues, and sections of the park have been closed for safety. The perimeter trail, pond trail, pavilion, playground, and dog park remain open. Through the act of the access may change. The basketball courts, safety town, soccer field, soccer parking area, crossover trails, and most of the runway remain closed. For more information or to see a map of the project, stop by Parks and Rec office at Warmesture Community Park or call 215-443-5428. Dog licenses, 2021 annual dog licenses can be purchased at Parks and Rec Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Pennsylvania law requires that all dogs over the age of three months must be licensed and have a rabies vaccination. 2021 Bark Park memberships are available. Virtual Bark Park orientation classes are held the third Wednesday of every month. Call Parks and Rec to be placed on the class list. Winners of the virtual snow sculpture contest, first place was Rosie the Dog by Anna Marie Clark, and second place was Winnie the Pooh and Friends by Anita Walker. Congratulations. Upcoming new programs are, check out the Township's website at www.warmesturetownship.org/specialevents for all the new programs that we are offering this spring and summer, such as ballroom dance, fencing, archery, virtual astronomy, children's crafts, beginner skateboard classes, summer camps, Medicare options, CPR and AED training, tennis, and babysitter training. Due to COVID, the following special events have been postponed. The annual egg scramble has been moved to July, and the rubber ducky of Agada has been moved to August. We thank our sponsors Penn Community Bank and Quaint Oak Bank for their continued support. The May Park Board Meeting will be held May 12, and that will be outside in person, weather permitting. Friends of Warmesture Parks fundraiser for bank shot basketball. After receiving a generous legacy gift, the Friends are fundraising to complete the intergenerational, all-inclusive bank shot basketball program. For more information or to donate, please go to www friendsofwarmestureparks.org. Hometown Hero banners remain available. Friends of Warmesture Parks continue to offer Hometown Hero Banner Program honoring our local veterans. Banners are displayed along Veterans Way in Warmesture Community Park from April through December. For an application or more information, please go to www friendsofwarmestureparks.org or stop by the Parks and Rec office. Parks are open from sunrise to sunset. After dusk, you must have a permit or risk being fined. Park restrooms are now open, and the Bark Park water has been turned on. Please do not feed any wildlife, especially the fox, the deer, and the geese in the parks. Supplemental feeding encourages wildlife to lose their fear of people and becomes dependent on handouts that are not part of their natural diets. Deer and foxes in Warmesture Community Park will soon be having babies, so for your safety, please do not approach these animals. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Judy, and I was talking to.
That was Mary.
Oh, sorry, Mary. I was reading something over here. I was talking to Karen Whitney about the bank shot basketball court. And originally, we were going to take one full-court basketball court away, and I didn't think that that was a good idea. I think we should add this as an addition, as a supplement. So, you know, obviously, there's going to be some minor change orders coming to build this. So any donations from the residents to help us pay for some small change orders to mill and pave and then set these poles, you know, would be welcome. But one way or the other, we'll find a way to get this put in, and it's definitely an enhancement to an already great project. And again, I can't say this enough. Ms. Whitney said that Nico, the contractor, is a phenomenal communicator with her. They've caught some, a few things that have saved us tens of thousands of dollars if they would have proceeded, and we've made some great corrections, and Craig and Aaron have done a great job working with them, and I can't say enough for having a responsible contractor. It really makes the difference. So I'm sorry for butting in, but then we'll go to Judy.
Oh, I don't have too much this week. I just want to, you know, that the Ben Wilson Center is opening up more now, and people should check out their website so that they know what's going on there, and all of our groups need a little extra money, a little extra help. So if you haven't joined Friends of Warmesture Park, or Friends of the Free Library, or the Ben Wilson Center, or any of our other friend groups, I certainly encourage you and urge you to do so. This week is National Nurses Week, so remember to thank a nurse, okay? Because they certainly have been by our sides this year, and they need, all medical professionals need to be thanked as often as possible, so thank you.
Yes, I agree, and they've been under a tremendous amount of stress for the last two years. Okay, did I miss anyone? I don't believe so. There's no presentations, and there's no land use matters, although next month may be a little busy. So I'd like to change things up a little bit and move to, one, the new business, because I think this is extremely important. Our interim manager, right after the last meeting, took seriously ill, and, you know, I'm happy, I'm very pleased to say, excuse me, that he's making a miraculous recovery because it was quite a serious illness. So since that happened, we've been scrambling, or I want to thank all our all our department heads and all our professionals, you know, our solicitor, our engineer, Public Works, and the Parks and Rec, and all our department heads for keeping things rolling. John Rainey did a great job. We've been paying our bills. We've been managing everything quite well, and the road program is moving along quite nicely and at a rabbit's pace. As a matter of fact, they're doing a great job. So with that, Bill's recovering nicely. We don't know if or when he'll come back. It was supposed to be a couple of weeks ago, but it may be pushed back now. So I'm actually pleased because I know that I've been communicating with all the board members, and we all agreed that we needed to do something quickly before things got out of control. So I'm pleased to have a motion to appoint Steve Wiesner as our acting township manager.
Motion.
Second, Mr. Chairman. We could do a group second. We could do a group second.
You can all second it. You can all second it if you want.
That would be terrific.
I'd even second it if I was allowed, but.
A lawyer, make it up.
Yeah, that's fantastic. And Steve, you know, he and I had spoken, and he was kind of a little hesitant, and I know Mark had spoken to him and a few other people, and I twisted his arm. I promised him that he would have the full support of the board, which you do, and you'll see that coming up. And, you know, it's a perfect fit, business-wise and otherwise, because Steve did a fantastic job, reconciling our books, finding money that was, that we had no idea we had, and preparing us for the audits, and a fantastic job, so I'll leave it at that, and any comments from the board?
I'm so happy. I'm sorry, Mark. So happy to have him on board. He was our interim township manager when Brian and I were first elected, and he was so instrumental in getting us on board and everything we needed to know. And then when we had the financial crisis, Steve stepped up to the plate again, and now we're in need, and he stepped up again. We can call you a friend, Steve, and I mean that. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. I appreciate that.
I echo the same sentiment, Steve. You know how I feel about you. I think you're a terrific guy. I'm really grateful that you're just willing to step up and keep things rolling here in Warmesture for us. And it reminds me of The Sopranos, Steve, when they say, "I keep leaving, and they keep dragging me back." I really appreciate you doing this. Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Well, I'd like to thank. Go ahead, Judy. I'd like to thank Steve as well, and I know you must have had a little trepidation because the last time you were interim township manager, it lasted years.
That's true, yes.
But thank you for stepping in the well again. Thank you.
Glad to help out.
I will echo the same sentiments. Thank you, Steve, and welcome back. Much appreciated for us on the board, as well as I'm sure the township residents.
Thank you, Mary.
Yeah, not only a great guy, but an excellent manager as well. So your qualifications, you know, that's the reason we brought you on board. Not only for your excellent work, but your qualifications as a manager as well. So we'll take any comment from the public.
There's no written public comment on this matter, and there's no public comment in the room.
Okay, okay. So with that, should we do a roll call or?
Roll call. Joe roll call, because he's got the authority of manager. And also, I'd just point out that Bill McCauley is thrilled that he can be acting manager as well, so.
That's fantastic, and then, you know, we'll see how it goes with Bill, see how his health is, and, you know, we'll take one step at a time. But let's call the question, Kathy?
Aye, absolutely.
Mark?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
And Mary?
Aye.
And a chair votes emphatically aye, and it's unanimous. Congratulations, Steve. Welcome back.
Oh, thank you, Ken. Well, I will definitely need Catherine McGovern and John Rainey's help, so glad they're there on the team, because it would not be possible.
I'm glad they are, too.
Yeah, absolutely. We have, we've been building a great staff here, and, you know, so you have some great support along with your department heads.
Yep, absolutely, and thank you.
You're welcome. So we might as well go to the second part and the first, or the couple of subsections here. We'll consider the approval of Resolution 2021-13, appointing the acting township manager as the chief administrative officer of the police and non-uniform pension plans. Is there a motion?
Motion.
All right, Mark, Judy second. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the public, Catherine?
No, there are no public comments on this matter.
Okay, thank you. So we can call this question, Catherine?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries 5-0. Okay, one last thing. Consider appointment of acting township manager as the right-to-know officer for Warmesture Township. Is there a motion?
Motion.
That's moved.
Okay, Judy, seconded by Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, any questions from the board? Comments? Okay, any from the public?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, let's call the question. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. That motion carries 5-0. Okay, that's fantastic. Thank you again, and Steve, again, you've come through for Warmesture, and it greatly is appreciated. Okay, so now we'll go to public comment.
Mr. Chair, there's both in-person and written public comment this evening.
Okay. Well, I see somebody's at the dais, so why don't we let her go first?
Good evening. Bobby Loftus, Warmesture Tax Collector. Welcome back, Steve. First, I'd like to thank the residents of Warmesture for their patience and consideration during this very difficult time. Because my office is not that big, I could only allow one person at a time in. There were days that the line wrapped around the building. There was one day we had almost 300 people, so I really want to thank them for their patience and courtesy during this difficult time. We did have a very, very good two months. In March, we had 1,681 parcels being paid. In April, we had 7,901 parcels, for a total of 9,582 parcels. After I closed my books yesterday, today I had 17 more payments. So that's close to 93% paid in discount. That's the highest it's ever been.
That's awesome.
It is awesome, and people were very, very nice. I also wanted to say someone left a pair of glasses in the office, so if they're missing a pair of black glasses, I have them in the office, and they can come get them. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's fantastic, and thank you again, residents. You did it last year. You did it this year, and that's fantastic, and we thank you very much. That helps us tremendously.
Yeah, we're usually around 90%, and we're at 90, almost 93.
Incredible.
That's before final notices go out, and some people always pay in face, so I think it's going to be a very good year.
Happy to hear that, and again, thank you to you, Bobby, for your great work. I know it's tough to play with people in one at a time.
It was very difficult, and as I said, the patience of the people were very good, you know.
Yeah, and that just shows what great residents we have.
And I'd like to also thank the police. The police were a big help to me. I had an incident where we had an unruly taxpayer, and the police were very, very good. I really appreciate it. Okay?
Thanks again, Bobby.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bobby? Bye-bye, Bobby.
Have a great, have a great evening, Bobby.
Have a good evening.
You, too. Okay, where are we going? We're going to go with the lie first, or?
There's still one more public comment in the room, yes.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Jerry Shidrew. I live at 462 Gibson Avenue, and I'm here to talk to you about the library tonight. Originally, I was planning to come here with a litany of issues and concerns that are really stressing the library, but I had to change that all up after I saw the agenda tonight, and I'm very glad to see that Steve is appointed acting manager because I think having someone that will take care of the day-to-day issues that come up and the management. Our library director, Tracy Reed, could certainly use and will be glad to have the direction of somebody that's been absent in the last several weeks while the township manager was, well, the last several months while the township manager was out. So I applaud your, the board's action on setting somebody, placing somebody in there that can help run the day-to-day management of the library and assist the library director for the short time that she's here. She, as I'm sure all of you know, I don't know how many of the residents that are listening know, but Tracy did tender her resignation last week. She accepted a position at another library district, and Montgomery County's gain is certainly our loss. She has been a really good library director, and she was right on the ball to turn our library around, especially during COVID, shutting it down and getting it all into a digital platform and meeting the needs of the people, the residents and the patrons. And now that we're starting to come up to people coming back in the library and the numbers are increasing, we still have one concern that needs to be addressed desperately, and that's staffing. The library is right now operating with 25% of their positions vacant. That is definitely impacting our services that we're offering to people, and it's only going to get more obvious as we return to normal. More people will be coming through the library and numbers start going up. We were, at the end of last year, we were down three positions, and Tracy had worked with.
Excuse me. I don't mean to cut you off or be rude or anything, but this is public comment, and you're doing a great job with that, but there is a limit to the time.
Okay, where am I on time?
You're pretty much up, but you can go ahead.
Okay, okay. If that's it, that speaks to the amount that you want to hear, then I get it.
No, no, I'll listen. I said you're just bad at time, but, you know, go ahead.
Well, I guess, I guess what I'm here for basically is asking the board to direct Steve Wiesner, who is our new manager, to like immediately put to the top of the list the library's issues with being below staff. In the last five years, the library has reduced its staff. I was not in agreement with all of that, but you're not always in agreement with everything. We've been able to operate with a staffing level that we have, lowering that to 25% vacancies and not being able to fill that, or to even to start tomorrow to advertise the jobs and at least get candidates in to submit their resumes, and so that when the new library director is hired and with Steve and the other township staff decide that they're going to move ahead, they'll have the people already there. It has to get moving. This has been since October, when the process was stopped. Since then, those three positions haven't been full, and three more ended. There are four pages that do the shelving of books in the library, and three of those positions are vacant. The fourth one is a part-time person who's going to be going, she's a high school student and going to go to college, so she, that's going to be another position that's down. We desperately need to fund our library, no, I'm sorry, to staff our library. It's running, the money for them is in the balanced budget, and it's a dedicated revenue stream. I see no reason why that we have this logjam, and I just am begging that it be cleared.
And. Well, thank you for your comment. We understand that there's, you know, first of all, Mr. McCauley wasn't out for two months, and he did plan to meet with the, with the library director, but unfortunately, he was taken ill. So we are not going to pile on someone's misfortune.
I'm not asking you to, and I'm not trying to point fingers either. I hope that that's not the impression that I'm giving.
I understand. So secondly, Mr. Wiesner's our acting township manager. He manages the township. That's an administrative issue, and I'm sure Steve will do a fine job in making those determinations.
I'm sure he will, too, and I do understand that he manages the administrative issues, and I understand the chain of command completely, but I also understand that the chain of command includes that department heads go to the township manager, the township manager goes to the board of supervisors, and ultimately, the supervisors are responsible to the public, their constituency, and that's why I came in here tonight.
Yes, okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, anyone else?
There is no more in-person public comment, but I do have one written comment.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
And this is from Patty Schaefer. I am once again emailing the township about the past due snow plowing invoices that I've been asking about for over four months now. Why can no one get back to me on the status of our payment, or if there is an issue, what the issue is? I recently sent over an invoice for finance charges, which I will continue to do until we are paid. Having to go public to a news channel is not something I want to do, but we need to answer about when you are planning on paying the bills, and if not, we need a reason why.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Excuse me. Is there an address on that? Is Ms. Schaefer a resident?
No, Ms. Schaefer's not a resident. It's a Doylestown address.
So then we don't need to address this right now. However, I will say that we have two people on this board that will disagree with the service that was provided, and that's why things are at a kind of a standstill here. And I have pictures. Mr. McKee, we both live in the same, two different parts, but on the east side of Jacksonville Road, and we adamantly disagree that the services provided were adequate. So that's been handed off to our solicitor. And then hopefully, we'll reach an agreement, and we'll be more than happy to pay.
Mr. Chairman, we've spoken, our office has spoken to her twice today. She's well aware, they have a whole different view of it, but she's well aware of what the issue is.
Right.
Okay, she may have written that letter before. I don't know when that was written. She's been spoken to personally by our office at least two times just today.
Okay, well, thank you. Let's move on.
That is all the public comment that we have.
Okay, all right. Let's move along. Where are we here, 7:30? Okay, consent agenda. I will read this. Consider approval of the Board of Supervisors' minutes dated April 1, 2021. Consider approval of stipulation agreement for the tax assessment appeal of property of Kenichi and Florence Hanko Miyagi trustees of the Kenichi and Florence Hanko Miyagi Trust. That'd be 753 East County Line Road. Consider 625 Mary Street, release number two from the escrow account, in the amount of $26,600. Consider 625 Mary Street, release number two from the escrow account in the amount of $26,640.40. Consider approval of the new town street of the traffic improvements easement, that's the Aldi slash Chase Bank. And consider authorization to allow the acting township manager to execute the new mail machine lease agreement with Key Business Solutions for a 60-month period term. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
So I can, okay Mark, thank you. Any questions or comments? I just want to say that the tax assessment appeal is something that was argued with the school district and will be the benefactor of that. And that's about it. Everything else is pretty much straightforward. Any comments from the public?
There's no public comment, Mr. Chair.
Okay, excellent. So with that, so should we call the question? Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Okay, finance report. I'll hand that over to Mary.
Okay, for the finance report, we have the approval of the bill list dated April 15th, 2021 in the amount of $650,690.37. A supplemental bill listed dated April 29th, 2021 in the amount of $1,179,097.81. And a supplemental bill listed dated March 31st, 2021 in the amount of $262,235.35 for a total of $2,092,023.53.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the bill list?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board? Any from the public? Take that as a no?
No, there's no public comment, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thanks Catherine. Okay, so let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. Okay, John, we'll hand it over to you.
Okay, so I'll be quick so no one starts counting dots on ceiling tiles. So pretty much what I usually like to do is just go over real quick how the general fund's doing because all the other funds are self-sufficient. The general fund through the end of March, the revenues were only slightly down $7,600, so less than one hundredth of a percent. So that was pretty much where tracking seems as last year. But the expenses are down 137,000, so a negative 5%. So we are doing a good job of keeping the expenses down. Compared to budget, revenues were at 31% so far this year. Last year they were at 28%. So revenues are exceeding budget compared to the prior year and expenses are only at 17% compared to 19% last year. So we are staying behind budget both dollar-wise and compared to prior years. Some of the things that can be attributed to that, EIT revenues actually up $56,000 compared to last year. Now, this is through the end of March, this is before any kind of pandemic. So we are still kind of looking apples to apples. Again, I think everyone is, everyone's building right now. They save money, not going on vacation. So permits are up $93,000 in just a three-month period compared to last year. And I'll say Bobby stole my thunder on this one. Real estate taxes, she was right, we are at 92.6% this year. Last year we were at 91.1, so we're a little bit better than last year, but still looking good. And on the expense side, the biggest savings we've seen so far, and I don't know if we can have the lawyers cover their ears on this one, but we are down $92,000 in legal and engineering fees compared to last year.
Wow.
So we're definitely saving some money there.
I'll tell them that.
Right.
We probably could have kept that a secret.
You get no credit for that, even if we do well, you know?
But overall, I would say through the end of March, things are looking similar to last year, but we are still slowly seeing gaps where the revenue's going up and the expenses are going down.
Thank you for the good news, John.
John, that professional part, that's like a batting average to them guys, you know? Batting average gets down, I got to get that up. No, that's great, thanks John. And you know what? And that's what we, we promised we would do. And you know, on this board, everyone on this board is on, is on board with, with that. We're doing a fantastic job and I would like to thank our professionals for, for doing a tremendous job and batting below average. That's fantastic. Yeah, and you know, and that's great. I'm glad, and that's what we needed to do. We needed to control our costs because they were out of control and you know, we're seeing the benefit of that right now. So thank you, John.
I would say the one other thing, the finance department, we have been able to do is on a monthly basis now, for the first time since I would say December, we actually sent out escrow bills to all the developers. So we were able to get all the money out of those escrow fees. I want to say it was just under 1.1 million I transferred at the end of March to make up for everything. So if you're looking at the financials that do from escrow and the general fund, that's going to go way down compared to the prior month.
Thank you, John.
I understand, thanks John.
So that's going to be happening on a monthly basis as opposed to yearly, I think it was before.
Yeah, and well, we didn't even know where half the money was in the escrows. And so Steve and yourself did it and whoever else helped, I'm sure it was the staff and everyone. Fantastic job, so it's always good news. And we'll continue to keep these spending controls in place. I'm assuming that that still needs to be done. This is, you know, this is very important. It's very important of making this township financially healthy again.
Yes.
We're seeing the benefit of the, of these initiatives that we've taken to cut costs and we are on the right road. We see light at the end of the tunnel. We need to stay on the same path. Thank you, John.
Yes, Steve, Steve, would you like to say something?
Uh, yes, I just, just wanted to comment on the escrows. That, that is really, really, really good news. That money then becomes available for use in the general fund as John mentioned. And Catherine would remind me constantly while I was there that they needed to be done. So I'm glad that at the end of, in my tenure, that we finally got some of it done. But John's really taking it to the next step with that million dollars. That's a big deal. So thanks Catherine for keeping on me on those.
Catherine's the best, isn't she?
We have, we have a great staff.
We appreciate you Catherine very much.
But I think we transferred, John, if I'm not mistaken, just about 500 and some odd thousand. So a million on top of that is, is really a huge accomplishment in just a short period of time. So that's a big deal.
And looking to the future, what that's going to do is next year, we're not going to get a tan anymore. So we'll have some more savings on interest and everything. So just that cash flow is very important.
Yes, yes. Well, again, we've put some great people in place and we appreciate everything you do. I can't say that enough. And by the way, I agree Catherine's wonderfully persistent when it comes to signing things and getting things done. It's fantastic, great to have her on the board. Catherine, as I tell you, every time I'm in that building, you should hit them up for a raise immediately.
I'm very appreciative, thank you.
Put it in the envelope, that's why I always said when I was working, put it in my envelope. Well deserved. All right. So that's it, John, you're finished?
Yep, that's all I got.
Okay, great, thanks very much. Let's go to unfinished business. And we're going to consider some appointments to the library board for the term ending December 31st, 2021. Do you guys have those names in your package?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, I'd like to make a motion that we, can I make both at the same time? Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Rosaria Giorla and Jerry Shadrue to as board members of the library board.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman. Okay, thank you, Mark. Any questions or comments from the board?
I welcome both of the, both Sandy and, and Jerry. They both bring a lot to the table for that board and I'm looking forward to what they can do on that board.
Okay.
And thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Any comments from the public?
There are no comments, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All, all opposed? And chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. And we look forward to a, a good working relationship with the library committee, Steve Weisner and Steve. So I guess now we will go to the professionals reports. Of course, we do not have a township manager's report tonight. But Steve, if you'd like to say something, that would be fine.
Just looking forward to getting started. I'm going to be in the office tomorrow and next week I did have a planned trip, but I will be available by phone and email. Larry, I think, has already got me set up, I think, on the township system. I think Catherine's, you know, and Larry worked on that today, if I'm not mistaken. So looking forward to getting started.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, Mr. Flagler.
Mr. Chairman, board. We, we wish Bill McCauley a speedy recovery. We're thrilled to have Steve back. I'm so happy he decided to come back and help the township. And you have our report. If you have any questions, we'll stand by our report. And I just wanted to mention that, of course, this Sunday is the most important holiday of the week, of the year, excuse me, Mother's Day. And I want to wish all the mothers a very happy Mother's Day to my mother, my wife, my daughters and all those, all those on the board who are mothers. Without you, we wouldn't be here. It's a thankless, terrible job that someone has to do. And I'm glad my mother did, so happy Mother's Day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Kanner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to echo what the solicitor just said. I want to wish Bill a speedy recovery and I welcome Steve back. Probably most of you don't know, I've worked with Steve in a couple other townships. They all echo the same feelings that you have. And I've already called Erin, who, you know, takes care of the day-to-day of the township. And she shouted out, oh, thank God, Steve's back, until Bill gets, gets healthy and gets back. So welcome aboard, Steve. I always wanted to mention before I get into the two big projects, the park project and the road program. Looks like you'll have Taco Bell amended final plan next meeting. All that is, is a second drive-through. So don't get scared too much about expansion Taco Bell, unless you like Taco Bell. They're just adding a second drive-through and it requires amending their prior approval from a few years ago. I don't believe you're going to see, even though we did a review, Hartsville Court, 20-unit townhouse development at 1250 West Bristol Road. That was part of a litigation for almost 10 years ago. That's been back and forth for over 10 years. Our review was pretty clean. They may just go ahead and prepare preliminary plans and not come and present. They feel pretty comfortable with the engineering and planning since it's been so long. So you may not see that for a few more months. Eventually they may be thinking of coming in and presenting to you. Another project that I don't think you're going to see that was anticipated for June or July is a West Warminster Center at Street Road and Norristown Road intersection. That is across from Pep Boys and near Law College School. They did receive our letter along with the planner's letter, traffic engineer, yeah, traffic engineer letter. And they were quite taken back by how many issues they have. So we had an engineer meeting. I think they're going to regroup and maybe come into staff level, try to figure out how they can reduce the number of variances needed to move forward. That was a four or five pad site per retail. There's a lot of natural resource issues, not a lot of traffic issues since that intersection's already signalized and been improved. But they have a lot of hurdles to get through. So you will not see them at your next meeting. The other two projects we want to talk about, the park project, everybody already pretty much talked about it. The bank, bank court, basketball bank court project, we've been helping the staff on that. Ken and I have been in contact and we're really, really trying to help push that along, work out the change orders and get that to completion. They're also working on the soccer field, playgrounds now and also finish up some stormwater management facilities out there. I echo what Ken had said, Mika's been great. They've caught a couple of our mistakes, they catch some other things to save money. It's a big, big project. We know everybody needs to work together on that and I am very happy about how that is going, as long as, as well as the board, I know. Road program, again, they are moving very quickly. So far, everything's been good. I just got notified yesterday, they are going to have a second paving crew. So they have a milling, milling crew, a paving crew. They've just now bringing in a second paving crew. So we're trying to balance one guy. We might need to bring in another guy, we're not sure. I've been in contact with Ken and the staff. But Andrew, your new public works director, Andrew McAdams, he's been great working with Aaron and my staff and helping out there. So I think we're okay with his assistance for now. The other thing I want to mention about the road program, I know there's issues with PennDOT roads and township money being spent. That's all been resolved, but I wanted to mention that authority got two grants, Warner Municipal Authority got two grants. That's going to cover some of the additional work they're doing on PennDOT Highway. PennDOT also came back and didn't require as much paving as part of the PennDOT project that the authority is doing. So pretty much all that scope's been modified and removed. We will really have minimal input or minimum involvement in that due to the grants and PennDOT's review. Now, that was a lot, but that's all I have. I'll entertain any questions.
I just have one question, Mr. Chairman, permission? Craig, are we doing the ADA corners along with this paving?
We'll be followed up on that. In the past, we've done it concurrently. Some other, some townships like to do the ADA ramps after, some like to do it at the same time. In the past, you have done it at the same time. Bill recommended or, you know, pretty much stated he liked to pave and then come back and do that. Because we were paving so many miles, we didn't want to stop and start. So we have it budgeted to start designing those. And I've already talked to the chairman and Bill, we will have to phase that. That's a very expensive part of the project.
That was my next question. Do you think there's no way that will get done this year?
Oh, it'll take probably three years, the amount of roads you've run. Just so everybody knows, it, it takes a couple thousand dollars between survey, engineering. You know, you have to make everything ADA compliant, of course. Per ramp, it gets quite expensive. You'll have to phase that over the next couple of years.
And that's one of those lovely unfunded mandates as well.
Correct.
Correct. That's just for the public certification, that's unfunded or required to do it, but not funded.
When that starts up, you won't be thanking me for my reduced bill, unfortunately. Sorry.
You're muted, Mr. Chairman. You're muted, Mr. Chairman.
You're muted.
So, so Mr. Kanner. I know, I had a COVID brain there. So Mr. Kanner's batting average is going up, is what he's saying.
Probably at the end of the year, yes, when we get to the head.
With all those ADA corners, he's going to make the All-Star team, right? So Craig, I just want to be, I want everybody to be clear. We weren't, we, the township was not paying for paving PennDOT roads.
Not at all, absolutely not.
I know it was, there's a little bit of confusion there. That's part of the municipal authority water main projects and, and we were not paying to pave state highways.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. It's just for the residents' information there.
Does that go for the ramps too, for the ADA ramps too, on the PennDOT highways?
Yeah, we won't, yeah, we won't be doing any, any ramps on PennDOT highways.
Okay.
Great. I think PennDOT came through and did them all a few years ago, didn't they, Craig? Ah. I know they did Street Road, I think they did PennDOT Highway.
The only, just recall, just like you had on your consent agenda regarding the easement for new town and street roads, you do own things. So if, if anybody modifies, if we happen to modify a signal and it impacts a ramp, then yes, then we're required to do it. But that's not part of your normal road program, no.
Okay. Any other questions from Craig? All right. So I guess we go to supervisors' comments. Kathy, how about you?
Okay.
Whoa, whoa, wait a minute, wait a minute. Township manager announcements of upcoming agenda items.
That's what I was going to ask you at our next meeting.
So do you think a, a second meeting in May is necessary? Steve?
Um, I do not, Ken, can I get back to you on that tomorrow? Um, I do not, Ken, can I get back to you on that tomorrow?
Absolutely. So we'll leave it on the agenda, and then we can always cancel, absolutely.
Okay. Um, I, I'd like to sit down and, and talk to Randy as well, and, um, just get a sense as to what, what items are up. Obviously, I'm not a fan of holding meetings if we don't need to have a meeting, so if we don't need to have it, um, you know, we, we could, you know, would certainly enjoy canceling it, so. But I'll touch base with Randy tomorrow and with you as well, Ken, and, and just see what issues are on the agenda. And Craig.
And that'll, Craig, that'll be. Yeah, that, that's great, thanks. And that'll be the, uh, extent of me putting you on the spot.
That's, that's not a problem.
Uh, I, I was going to cancel it, but we'll, we'll, I think that's the better move, to let you, uh, get your, get your feet wet, get in your chair, and then, uh, we, we can talk about it. That'd be fun.
I, you know, uh, engineering-wise, I'll touch base with Craig tomorrow, and, because usually those are, sometimes they're date-sensitive, so, but hopefully if there aren't anything, that would be great.
Okay, excellent. All right, now we can go to Supervisors' Comments, and Kathy?
Yes, uh, first announcement, I'd like to say, please exercise your right to vote on Tuesday, May 18th. Like, just a general announcement to all of our residents. Uh, secondly, I'd like to thank our staff and all the professionals during the time Bill has been sick. Uh, our Township ran like a well-oiled machine, the way it should be with the department heads and staff and professionals that we have. And I know that Ken touched on it, our professionals have been, uh, ready, available, whenever we need anything during this process. Want to thank, thank them very much for doing a, a stand-up job. And again, to our staff and, and, um, and all of our, our, uh, Department Directors. Also, Catherine McGovern, you get an extra shout-out because we know you've been holding down the fort there, so thank you very, very much. Uh, also, welcome back, Steve. And also, I'd like to say, Happy Mother's Day to all the moms out there. I hope you have a wonderful day. And that's it for me, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mark, you're up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, welcome back, Steve. You know, I look forward to working with you. You've always been a good friend and a good friend of this Township, so I'm really pleased to have you back.
Thank you.
I also want to wish everyone, um, Happy Mother's Day. And I also want to, once again, thank Tracy Reed for her contributions to the library. She'll be sorely missed, and I wish her well in her new endeavor. Hope it's successful for her. Uh, also, I wanted to ask the Chairman, um, is casual attire, uh, okay from June till Labor Day, as we traditionally do? I would say that's perfectly fine with me. Okay, that's going to segue me to my.
These ties are a little rough.
Yes, that's going to segue me to my last thing, is, uh, Mr. Flagler, that's a really nice-looking pullover you have there. I saw the nice, nice ad there. That would look wonderful for the casual attire summer.
I'm modeling it, I'm modeling it for you. This is, this is our new look. This is the COVID look.
I'll have to stop, I'll have to stop up the office and see you. Anyway, but that's all I have. I want to wish all the mothers out there a Happy Mother's Day.
What size are you, Mark? We give them away. What size are you? We'll get you one.
I'll have to tell you that one privately, it's been. That's why we only broadcast from here up.
That's right.
But that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the time. Uh, you're welcome. Okay, Judy?
Okay, I too want to emphasize that, uh, we have voting coming up soon, and to all the residents, and that includes people who are not registered on either of the two main parties, because in this primary, there are four ballot questions, so independent voters can come and vote too on those ballot questions. And I want to emphasize too, that the, uh, pandemic has made our opioid pandemic worse, and please, if people need help, or you see somebody that needs help, or you see anything, call the number on the Push Out the Pusher sign, or get a Push Out the Pusher sign from the lobby and put it on your lawn, and try to help people. There's a lot of people hurting out there. And then Happy Mother's Day to all of you. Even you, people that aren't officially mothers, you're still mothers. So, Happy Mother's Day.
All right, thanks, Judy. Mary?
I'd also like to wish everybody out there a Happy Mother's Day, and congratulate all of our recent college, college graduates. Um, best of luck to them out there finding jobs. Um, again, speedy recovery to Bill McCauley, and again, welcome back, Steve. Catherine, again, kudos to you, and thank you for all of your efforts, helping all of us. Um, it's been much appreciated. Um, that is it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mary, thank you, and, uh, again, I'll just reiterate, excuse me, Happy Mother's Day, excuse me, to my wife and, um, my two, uh, my two children, and, um, and to every other, all the other mothers out there, be safe. Um, you know, we're looking forward, uh, we talk about this all the time at, at the board. We're really looking forward to getting back to some sort, sort of normalcy and, and, uh, and meeting people, and, uh, if you haven't gotten your shot, there's really no excuse right now. Um, they're everywhere, they're abundant. We're, we're working on actually having a clinic. Uh, we're not sure what building we're going to have it in, but Catherine's been, um, uh, working on that with, uh, with, uh, someone that's, uh, offering a clinic to come in and get your shot. And, uh, the sooner we all get vaccinated, the sooner we can all get back to normal. So, uh, that's all, and have a great, healthy, safe weekend.
And let's see you all on Memorial Day.
Yes, looking forward to that, and remember, there is, yes, we will be having a service out here, 10 o'clock. Please, uh, everyone's welcome. Everyone's wel, of course, we'll have to social distance, wear a mask, but it's in honor of our, uh, our fallen servicemen and women. So it's for, for a very worthy cause.
Mr. Chairman, may I interject for a minute?
Certainly.
I think we inadvertently bypassed the second public comment period.
Oh, we did.
There, there is none, just for the.
Oh, good.
Scared me, Catherine.
Yeah, me too. Me, me too, because the, the green light just went on for the battery on my bicycle here, it's stopped. Okay, it's ready to go, right? It's ready to go, it's all gassed up. All right.
Motion to adjourn.
So Mark's, Mark's bike's all gassed up. Let's, uh, have a motion for adjournment.
I just did.
Excellent, thank you. All right, everyone.